I don't want to get in there.
It's just that.
I think it's just this building.
It's just that.
I'd say too.
And I think we're on character.
There's lots of cars that are supposed to cover.
Oh, yeah. You modern, much better systems.
I was gonna call down here and he said, I can't.
You've got one power off.
Bring them on fire. I put the dog down, brought the dentist, the gurri back, called me, he says, the power is off. And I said, okay. He said, why isn't it off? And I said, because they ain't no juice running through the line.
Yeah.
Ah, well, we all said, it's a dark.
I don't think we have.
It wasn't TVA, no, yes, but I know Merple, the law, the party knocked.
Wow, that's a big alley.
Yeah. But I got a text from Comcast Business.
They're supposed to absolutely let me go for a lot of things. I'll link it up, but if you notice anything, shoot up there.
Okay.
Karen Harris.
So he was applying.
Explain, but it's right now.
Yeah, come back, come back.
Yeah, so, so what you're calling.
Okay, no problem.
I'm looking rough, still, come back.
I'm glad you got a thing.
I tell you, that's pure.
I was gonna suggest one.
Blessings of the year existed, because we had killed that old gal, and I said, I realized. That was the, you remember.
You're going over where we're getting.
Yes. It's like across the river.
The whole way.
The way you.
Well, almost as far away as you can get with that, and then it can relate.
He don't, Jim probably don't know that. They's gonna turn it over to the state.
I needed Maple Creek.
State was coming in there. Be better when I see.
I'm a one senior D, it's okay.
Cut to the chase. Yeah, I'm not, I don't.
It's five thirty, so let's call the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order. Will you rise with me, please, and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams. Keith Buckles.
Here.
Do I hear an approval of the minutes from March fourteenth meeting?
So moved.
Got a move in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Three, planned agenda items. A subdivision plat to adjust lot lines for ten lots. Applicant property owner Benchmark Associates located Jackson Crossing. Tax map zero one zero K, parcel zero eight five one zero zero through zero nine four point zero zero. R one P U D, suburban residential district plan unit development, District Five, approximately point eight five acres. Is there a representative from Benchmark here today? Jim, you wanna comment on this?
I will, so basically, this was a subdivision we discussed months ago. They were looking to build these townhouse units. Since that's been done, the surveyor wanted to go back and, and basically adjust the lot lines. He can't show the lines he's moving because it's such a small increment. So basically, went back and shows the lot lines directly under the party walls of the unit. No increase in lot sizes, no increase in lot numbers. It's just merely doing some adjustments since they've been built to make the units line up properly on the lot. We didn't see any issues with it.
So you are in favor of approval?
I will be, yes, sir.
The only thing I know, it's a pitiful, it's just, it's not, doesn't make much difference, but there, one of the notes identifies that there's a five foot drainage management on every property line. Well, there can't be a five foot drainage management to the building.
Absolutely. The only drainage management's obviously being a common property, and that's probably, honestly, it's probably when it was originally platted. This thing's been replatted several times since it's.
I don't know if that's something you want to change or what, but that's the only thing I noticed. I'll make a motion to approve with that, with that note.
And I second it.
Got an approval and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, so b. B subdivision plat for three lots, applicant property owner Myron Mullins located Trendy Farms East, tax map zero zero five, parcel zero twenty two point zero zero, zero twenty two point twelve, and zero twenty two point thirteen. A two rural residential district, District Five, approximately forty nine point eighty two acres. Uh, is Mr. Mullins here?
Hi, ma'am.
Wanna come up and address this, sir?
And I, and I apologize, I was hoping to have our, our engineer here, if you have a letter that he wrote, talking about, I think they, actually have a copy of the letter, I'm happy to pass out there. Or you've got it, so, thanks. We, we've really just reduced it down to where, where there's three lots being affected by the proposed road. And the, the, what the engineer, he put five lots in here, but two of the lots were actually pre-approved on the exist, the road that's already in there. So this, this cul-de-sac is servicing three lots. Beyond that, if, if you read this, and his, his point is the runoff is gonna be, it's gonna be minimal, it should be, should be handled by the grass, and, and there's a distance from where the runoff stops, and how the runoff goes, is how it's going currently, we're not adjusting what's already happening as far as water that goes down through there.
You're not, you're not adjusting the direction, but in my opinion, there's additional flow, because you have a road that's X length, times X width, and the runoff on that road is more than it was when it's grassed.
Okay.
So I don't, to me, you need to provide some kind of calculations of how much runoff he's got there, and, and how much it was before, and then we see if we don't need detention. He, he says, but he says it was approved in July twenty two for variance for no detention, I don't, I don't remember if I.
I, I don't know, the July twenty two was probably under the original submit, or was that when y'all originally submitted the smaller lot plat?
Right.
And y'all were trying to?
Yeah, two and a half acre lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that plat showed, but that plat was never approved.
I think, I think his point was what, the issues that were raised and that were road width curves and gutters. So I, I, I agree, nothing was necessarily approved, those were the three issues that said we needed to correct, so. But, but, um, you know, he's been out there several times, and, and I don't, obviously, I'm not here to represent myself being, being a civil engineer, so I wouldn't insult you by trying to say that, but, but he's been out, and his, his point is the way the ground is laid, we're not adjusting, we're not affecting the way the ground is laid very much, and, but it will be paved, so.
And it's, what, eleven hundred feet long?
I don't know, I don't, it's, no, it's not eleven, that's, I think that's correct.
I, I can't remember, and I can't see this thing really well. It's, it's a section eleven hundred, so that's eleven plus zero, so that's eleven hundred feet.
And may, and maybe it is, I would, it's, that's, that seems long to me, but, um.
That's my own, that's my only concern, is that there at least needs to be some drainage calculations in place. To show we don't need detention, there's not any increase.
Ultimately, it's gonna be about eleven hundred seventy five to twelve hundred feet.
And that was, that was with the ten lines?
Uh, as, as what we are reviewing.
What we're reviewing now.
Yes, sir.
Did you, were you, did you have a comment on the, the radius of the cul-de-sac before?
I do, yeah, so, so some of the notes, and, and of course, the survey can be corrected to adjust that, this will be a preliminary approval only. Uh, you know, taking a radius from, uh, uh, I forget what they showed, but the right of way be a hundred feet, road diameter of eighty feet, in the cul-de-sac. Of course, a swift, uh, and, and Mr. Greer mentioned that they would have opportunity to get that in place prior to preliminary approval, and then, of course, whatever we had decided on the runoff. I don't know what your all's thoughts are, I think everything else pretty much is, is addressed, and is fine for approval of the roads with, obviously, us receiving the swift, they'll make in a plat correction. And then whatever your thoughts are as far as him providing calculation and show, here's pre and post development calculations to show that they are not, I don't know if you all, it's up to you whether you elect to approve it based on him providing those prior to development, and/or how you wanna handle that.
I'm okay with that, if you, if you, if you are.
I will be fine with that, yes, sir.
I'll be quiet. I'll make a motion to approve it with that contingency.
Second. Got a move in a second, any discussion? All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. C rezoning request from R one to C two, applicant David Horsen, property owner Roman in Mariara, Iasha C, located one two five seven oh, highway seventy, tax map zero zero seven, parcel one one two point zero zero, R one, suburban residential district, District Five, approximately one acre. Mr. Hosen? You have the floor.
Yeah, uh, you know, if you don't, uh, when we bought the property, uh, we thought of the intention of building multi-units, it was presented to us as a.
Could you speak louder, please?
I don't know if that's, I'm sorry. It was presented to us as a, uh, multi-family land, but we found out after the fact that it's not approved for multi-family. And, uh, I, we came here and asked what the options are, and at the time, they said you can split in two and put duplexes on it. And had to die a mind, I came, what, two weeks ago to start the process of splitting and stuff, and then they were told the legislation changed again, and not even that is possible. Some options were either put two, I mean, I don't know, split in two or rezone. And I said, let's try to rezone in commercial, and, uh, I know my son is buying cars and, uh, public car shop, car repair, car lot, something like that. Or, I don't know, both are be something. But maybe commercial for that, right, commercial, too, I said. I don't know, I gotta drop this, go, this is first time we do this, so.
Yeah, I mean, what he described, a street, bought it under one premise, of course, he couldn't do that, at this point, he, he has about an acre lot out there, so he's asking me what his options were. I said, well, if you have connection to sewer, you can build a duplex, uh, or you might be able to subdivide if the lot would be, meet his allowable areas and stuff, to try to subdivide and build two dwellings. He did ask about rezoning to C two. If you look at it, the, the closest C two is coming off of Kevin Lane, there's a property just to the, uh, right in this area here, where the, where the disturbed areas, where storage units are going, that is C two, but it is, it is accessing off Kevin Lane, everything in and around that property is actually R one. We had, I've received one phone call in regards to it, as to what was gonna be created, I don't know if anyone showed up to speak about that. But, but looking at maps and things of that nature, it's, it's basically mapped out to, to be like an R one residential type development through that area, as opposed to a commercial development.
Anybody wants to speak on it?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, uh, it's developed into a pretty nice residential, residential area there, and I just feel like the C two doesn't seem to fit the, fit the, uh, or be a good fit there.
Is that a motion to deny?
That, yeah, I, I would make a motion to deny.
Second. Anybody in the audience wanna speak on this? Do we have a second to that?
I do, second.
We have a second. We've got a move and a second to deny any discussion. All in favor of rezoning signify by saying aye. All opposed to rezoning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Denied. Number four, county commission action on planning commission recommendations, Jim, you got anything on that?
We had none.
Code's department building activity summary for March twenty twenty three.
Yep, moved up a little bit from the previous two months.
Any additional comments from the public? Update on the planning department?
None, nothing to add.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Take it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. You're good.
I'm glad you made the statement. They live for time.
It's a cat in the heat.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, you can get it pretty close. Close enough, I guess. It's just whole. I can call, not quite, they, 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 they're there now. BS is there, and she turned in, uh, off, uh, highway seven, what's that runner there? When the guy had, must've been a van running in the building. I said, we just put a, maybe rezone it, that's, that's his best thing to call it here. He's running it.
You might, you're certain, you, you have small fast there also. So, you need to go with the question.
I think he's, uh, with some kind of car business. See you.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I'll call, uh, Loudoun County VZA to order a roll call.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Anybody that's here, that's here is gonna speak tonight, you need to stand up, raise your right hand, it'll be sworn in, if you're gonna speak on any subject. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in the cause is now pending before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Item A subdivision plat to adjust lot lines for ten lots, I'm on the wrong, I'm on the wrong, everybody. Yeah, I mean, everybody read the meaning?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, now we can get to it. A variance request to hold fundraiser for murder, outdoor animal rescue with limited overnight camping, applicant property owner Michael Patty located sixteen five ninety nine, Middle Road West, tax map zero four four, parcel zero five seven, A one agriculture, foster district, District Three, approximately five point oh seven acres. Mr. Patty here?
That's me. Yeah, what, uh, we're big supporters of the organization, Animal Shelter, it's, it's a no-kill shelter, it's nonprofit. Earlier this year, they were looking for a venue to hold their fundraiser, they have fundraiser every year, actually have multiple fundraisers every year, but they lost their, their regular venue that they usually use, and we had offered our property to have, to have their fundraiser. Well, then, we were working with Lance Coleman over in Marable, he writes the emergency action plans for Marable. And so we had a meeting down there on our property, uh, with Richard Martin and Ronnie Lett, the fire chiefs from the North City and Greenback. And, uh, E M T came down too, we had a meeting down there, and, uh, Ronnie Lett, uh, he doesn't wanna move forward without a permit for the event. And then, doing a little more research, I also discovered that, uh, without a permit, I can't get event insurance to cover, to cover myself. Without a permit, I can't actually charge anybody for a ticket. Uh, I, I looked up the rules for a private party, and if I, if I run, run fundraiser under a, a private party, best I can rate by Tennessee state law, uh, it's illegal for me to charge anybody, uh, at a private party, so I can't, I can't raise any funds for the organization if I'm not selling a ticket. Basically, what it'd be is, uh, as far as the Friday, where it'd be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, event, uh, Friday night would mainly be the fun, uh, the, the organizers of Mark, and, uh, the volunteers be getting together and kinda having a little get together Friday night with, uh, some live acoustic music. And we'll be going over with our volunteers, who's gonna, you know, pick up trash, who's gonna do the, handle parking, who's gonna do this, and who's gonna do that. Saturday would be, uh, the day that people would actually spend the night. Saturday would be, you know, food vendors, uh, art vendors, uh, and we have, uh, if I could bring this forward, uh, it's not a, it's not great math, but it, it kinda gives you an idea of what we got had in mind. We have, uh.
Who brought you in on that request?
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, sir?
Who brought you in on that request?
Who what?
Who brought you in on that request?
Uh, I'm a mile off three twenty one, I'm sixteen five ninety nine, at a road west, I'm.
You down there where they used to play music all the time?
Yeah, I bought, I bought his property. Yeah, he had a, I, I hear tell he had a big party or something, uh.
You ain't gonna have one like that, or?
No, no, uh, another reason I wanna charge is 'cause, uh, I don't really want trashy people on my property. So, uh, the, the more I can charge for a ticket, the more apt I'm be to have a higher class of, of animal lover on my property. We, you'll see, we kinda labeled out a, a place to put twenty tents, uh, they're not gonna be allowed to build a fire or anything like that. We measured off, uh, I got on the National Park website, it looked like a fifteen foot by fifteen foot was about the average for a tent spot in a national park. Uh, so we measured off fifteen by fifteen and came up with, uh, with everything else we, we wanna have going on. That was the limit of tent spots we could accommodate. Uh, those people are not gonna be allowed to build a fire or anything like that, we, we've got an outdoor kitchen with a grill in it, we've got a charcoal grill, we've got another gas grill, there'll be plenty of stuff for them to use. I have two fire pits, one by the creek, and then I've got the little metal corbeled one on my, my patio at the house, that's only two fires to be allowed on the property, those two. We planned on having, uh, the North City officer on site, and we plan on having six porta potties. Uh, and we plan on limiting the number of people. We've built a website, and the website's ready to go, we're wanting to sell tickets through the website. That way, once the, once it's reached the limit of ticket sales, we'll shut the website down, and, uh, we've come up with a number of, maximum number of people we want on our property is, is a hundred and fifty. Well, when me and my wife got married, we got married here, and, uh, three hundred people showed up, uh, we, we know the property will hold it, but I don't want three hundred people there. Not, not for, not for something like that.
So you're just asking for one weekend, one time?
Yeah.
Alcohol?
Have you established the month?
Yes, June, uh, June second, third, and fourth, that'd be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, like I said, we'll have live music there, but we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to cut it off at ten, unless we have some kind of, you know, equipment issue and makes us run a little bit late, but we'll still try to do everything we can to cut it off at ten. And, and also, uh, my property's kind of a, it's kind of a natural amphitheater, so typically, the music doesn't need to be very loud to be heard anyways, so.
Serving alcohol?
No, not serving anything. All I'm doing is.
Permitting it to be on premises?
Yes, they can, I was gonna permit them to have coolers, you know, of what they wanna drink, that was another reason I wanted as many tent spots as I could. If anybody had a little too much, uh, they can stay right there.
Marijuana or illegal drugs?
No, 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 no.
Not permitted?
Not permitted.
Reason I asked, uh, Fairview Road had a, kinda gathered about the same thing as this, and it kinda got out, and Sheriff's Office had stepped in, so it's.
Well, we, we, we wanna have an officer on site, so we want him there. Kind of what the plan is, is like Friday night, I said, be the organizers, Saturday would be like the only big day, and that'd be the only day that people would actually, you know, spend the night. And, uh, Sunday would be kinda getting them easing on out for a while, we're gonna have some, we were planning on having some acoustic music Sunday, just to kinda give people something to listen to as they packed up their tent and started easing on out. Yeah, I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't want a wild party, that's not, that's not my intention, we wanna have a place where they can have fun, but we want to be safe. Like I said, that's why we want, we want an officer there Saturday. I'm not really worried about Friday, since it's all gonna be all mostly organizers, and if you guys request an officer to be there Sunday, we'll have one there, but people kinda packing up and, and getting ready to go back home, I, I don't see any reason for altercation. Like I said, I'm trying to get a higher class of human being in there to begin with, so we don't have any issues to begin with.
Do your neighbors complain? No, yeah, I know about it.
My neighbors know about it, actually got a deal worked out with my neighbor to use his field for parking. The other neighbors are, so, pretty far off, I don't think it's gonna be a, an issue.
Anybody here to speak for it or against it? Or you got, Jim?
When he and I talked, of course, this isn't an allowable use, so he's starting with a variance just to have the event there. Of course, we discussed the camping, overnight camping may be an issue, but we'll leave that to your discretion. He knows he'll have to submit some type of site plan, which he may already have already addressed that, showing parking, uh, things of that nature, we'll issue him, I think it's a five dollar, uh, permit, almost like we do for the haunted mazes and things of that nature with your all's approval and blessing. I think he's answered the other questions as far as dates and time constraints, I've not received any phone calls in regards to it. And then, and then, of course, you know, Meadow Road's pretty small, I didn't know if they had anybody in place also to kinda get traffic in an hour or direct that, if that thing gets up.
If he can handle the kind of parties that they've had to work that place before, he ain't going no trouble.
I got you. Sound like you been there.
I ain't been there, but I've been by. He got so bad, they shut her down.
I got you.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Oh, likewise, you're good. Let me, can I add one thing to that? That's for one weekend, that's all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, but I mean, I want that on the motion, just for one weekend, it's not a blanket date.
No, no, I don't.
Okay, you're fine, you're fine.
I don't want to work that hard.
I understand, I just wanted to add that in there.
The only thing I get out of this is a big load of trash Monday. Look, I need to be looking for.
Write my number, Dan, seven-four-zero. Five-one-seven. Give me a call tomorrow.
We can call you tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Any particular time?
Eight-four-thirty for Thursday.
Appreciate your time.
Let me say this too, there's a lot of people that do this without going through the proper channels that you went, you've already got the fire chiefs there, the police chiefs there, and you're standing in front of planning commission, I commend you for going through the proper steps.
I don't like break rules, but here we are. I don't want to be in trouble, I don't want break rules, so.
Thank you, Governor.
Item B, variance request to build a thirty-to-thirty garage building to store tractors both prior to the primary dwelling. African owner Brett Coffage, located four-oh-seven-oh, Rest Camp Road, tax map zero-three-six, parcel zero-six-five-point-zero-zero, eight-one agriculture, forestry district, district three, approximately five acres. Did I say it right, Coffage?
Yes, sir.
Or Coffage?
Hey, it sounded good to me. Yeah, that's just our plan, guys, a thirty-by-thirty garage. We actually have a letter here from our general contractor because we're building a house on that property. And we'll be breaking ground on June, right around early June. So all this is, is we live right now in South Knox, and we have a boat with our family and stuff. It's just parking the boat in there, the tractor, anything else we're using that property, just so we have to tote that around before the actual house is done. Like I said, we do have a letter here from our general contractor saying we're going to break up.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ain't nobody here against it, ain't nobody here. Got a motion and a second, any more discussions? All the papers say aye. You're good.
Thank you.
Item C, variance request to build a new home that will interfere with setbacks, five-foot right side and eight-foot rear left corner. Property owner, Loudoun County Habitat for Humanity, located one-hundred Norwood Street, Norwood Street, tax map zero-two-zero, parcel zero-three-six, eight-one agriculture, forestry district, district two, approximately a quarter acre. Anybody here for that?
Yes, sir.
I didn't swear, I didn't know that would be.
All right, it's fine, we'll try it.
Sorry to tell the whole truth about the transfer that we got.
I don't know if you're lying.
I don't know a lot about this property, I know that the lady that owns the property next to her is her mother. We're going to be building her daughter a house on this corner here. And the surveyors mentioned that it'd be a setback, a variance of a setback too, in order to get the house exactly where we needed it to.
Anybody here got anything to say about it?
Let's check, if I could add to this, please make sure you do your due diligence with LCP because there's utilities on the side and in the backyard that goes up behind those houses. So that may, that may impact some of your setback requests.
Yes, sir. We've already identified, we've already called and got everything laid out, coordinated with the electrical company and all that.
Is it a five foot, down to five feet, or it's decreased by five feet?
Just decreasing it five feet.
Decreasing.
So it doesn't get into the drainage or easements along the property line?
No, sir.
You got anything, Jim?
I don't know.
Anybody else got anything?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All the papers say aye. You're good. Anybody else got anything to say?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion? We're adjourned, thank you.
Well, you got time to get free back.